I'd like to call to order the monthly meeting of the Montgomery County Legislature for September 26, 2017, and let the record reflect at 7:00 PM. Clerk, please call the call roll.
Chairman Dyer.
Present.
Legislaturian Headwell.
Present.
Legislaturian Wilson.
Present.
Legislaturian Ducey.
Present.
Legislaturian Pepp.
Present.
Legislaturian Isabel.
Present.
Legislaturian Patel.
Present.
Legislaturian Kelly. Legislaturian Sweet.
Present.
Thank you. If we could all stand for, salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. And Phil Horner, lead us in the, salute please.
Myler, please salute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could remain standing. During the moment of silence, I'd like to recognize some of the veterans in area that we've recently lost. The first veteran is John Babervich. John was from Fort Johnson, New York. John proudly served our country and enlisted in the US Navy in 1968. He was stationed in Jacksonville, Florida, and bravely served two terms in the Mediterranean aboard the USS Roosevelt. Myron Doc Sizdek. Myron was born in Amsterdam. Myron was a US Navy veteran, serving during World War II, serving both in the States and the European Theater. Robert Cap DiCaprio, 88 of Amsterdam. Mr. DiCaprio was a Navy veteran, serving in the US in the Philippines. Thomas F. O'Brien. Thomas was 93, formerly of Clinton Avenue in Fort Plain. Thomas proudly served with the United States Navy during World War II for three months, three years, six months, and five days aboard the USS Nestor. And finally, Mr. Ernest Lohmeyer of Amsterdam. Proudly served in the United States Army during the Korean War. Hope we could kindly remember those veterans during our moment of silence. Next part of our meeting this evening is the public comments section. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, please step towards the rail and state your Seeing none, we'll go right to our presentation with the Canjo School folks. If legislator Patel grabbed the gate, if we could have our superintendent, Dem Gribshaw, come up, Rebecca Gleason, Jocelyn Hammond, Phil Horner, Carol Anne Hammond, Tracy Evans. If you'd just come right to the front of the desk here.
We would like it.
Right here. Right up in there.
All right. Jocelyn, you come in. You and Mr. Horner.
Okay. There. All right. If you would be so kind, Jocelyn would like to accept our recognition for us.
Oh, okay, sure. Phil, did you want to just?
Oh, okay.
Could you just maybe give the legislators and the people in the gallery a little idea about the STAR program and also the food, or food for, for, food for, feed. Or what?
Bill, Bill, food, feed.
Well, first off, on behalf of Mrs. Gribshaw and the students and staff at Canijahary, we just want to say thank you very much for recognizing us tonight and giving us this opportunity. We started the STAR program at Canijahary High School four years ago, and STAR stands for Student/Teacher Activity Rally. And the goal here was to really build relationships and build bridges between students and teachers. And a large part of that is going to be giving back to the community. And what better way than with a food drive, especially around the holidays? Last year, we did our first annual food drive. We filled an entire school bus and then some. We were able to help six local Montgomery County food pantries and food kitchens. And it was just such an amazing experience for the kids, and the outpouring from the community was so great that we kind of raised the bar for ourselves in the second year. And we're going to do two full school buses this year. That's the goal. It's going to take a lot of hard work, but we're committed to doing it. And, you know, if we can get Derek Jeter, everyone's favorite number two there, that would be great, but, you know, certainly secondary to our overall goal, which is to give back twice as much as what we were able to last year. And it's been a great experience for our entire district and the community of Canijahary. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Those things we were going to give them.
And we have a few things that we'd like to pass on to you, some posters for the STAR program for this school year with our logo, what you think about, you bring about, and some of the posters promoting the food drive as well.
Michael, like that?
You're doing it.
Absolutely. This is awesome. Thank you. So, I do have a proclamation from the county, and I'd like to read it for you if I could. Whereas the county of Montgomery is proud to recognize and honor those individuals and organizations in our community who commit to serving others and by doing so, make a positive impact in the county. And whereas the Canjahary Central School District has placed a strong priority on teaching students important lessons in life of giving to those who are less fortunate, working hard, staying humble, and being kind. Whereas the Canjahary School District on the Fill to Feed Initiative is looking to collect non-perishable food items, drinks, childcare products, paper products that would be loaded up on Tuesday, November 21st, and then distributed to food pantries, churches, local organizations throughout Montgomery County. Whereas the Canjahary, Canjahary School Student/Teacher Action Rally, the acronym STAR, has set a goal of filling two entire school buses with food donations and using its Fill to Feed program to impress upon students that thinking of others is important, especially as the holidays approach. Excuse me. And whereas in 2016, the STAR program made it its mission to hold food drive and raise enough donations to fill one entire school bus, and the community rallied together throughout the fall to fill the school bus to the brim with donations, which were then donated to charitable organizations and families in need. Now, therefore, be it resolved, County Executive Matthew L. Ossenford and Legislative Chairman Roy Diamond, on behalf of the Montgomery County Legislature hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 26, 2017, as a date to recognize the Canjahary School District Fill to Feed Program.
Thank you very much.
So, just for the ledge and for the folks in the gallery, beside all the good things that they do here, like this comment on our superintendent, Mrs. Gribshaw, she was one of the people that were very instrumental in getting the program together at the P-Tech program, the Oppenheimer Freida, where students with agricultural background can go to, go there and end up with a degree in agriculture, which as you guys know and ladies know, is a big part of Montgomery County. Phil Horner, not only an excellent history teacher, and one of the things I'm sure all these sports fans would like to know still holds a couple of school records that...
For the timing.
Yeah. For the timing, yeah.
1997, which is the 200 IM and the 50 freestyle. So, it's quite an accomplishment since 1997 to do that. And I would also mention, Phil is the author of a series of books, Maximilian P. Mouse, and it travels through history. One of my favorites is when he's Abraham Lincoln and does the Gettysburg Address. So, I just wanted to mention that. Of course, probably Phil's proudest, excuse me, accomplishment is his son, Andy. So, if we could give him a...
Thank you for saying that.
We want to have the ledge up with the bags to...
Yes.
I'm excited.
You should be totally excited.
So, just put it...
What do you think about your stuff, huh? Is this that it? I know. What do we think about socks?
That's right.
Huh? Oh, yeah. Everybody knows.
I want you guys to take one step forward.
Sure. Okay.
Some people in the front, we are like holding the bags at the waist level, that would probably be in the back line.
Oh, hold it out. Wow. We're going to do some curls while we're at it.
Odd one, right in the middle.
That'd be perfect. Thank you.
Staging is everything.
You don't know where to look.
He can be making faces, baby. We get it.
Oh, honestly, you moved up perfect. I can see it by now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Troy, thank you. Really, thank you so much.
Thank those kind words, Troy. I appreciate it very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
You guys may be good luck with your...
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Wonderful. Thank you. Tell family I said hi. Very much. Thank you. Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Bob, are you okay?
Thank you.
I know it wasn't yours, but are you okay? Do you need a moment? Moving on. Deputy Clerk, do we have any communications?
No.
Looking for a motion and a second for the approval of minutes for the regular meeting August 22nd, 2017, Economic Development Planning Committee, September 19th, the Physical Services Committee meeting, September 19th, Human and Health and Human Services, September 19th, Public Safety, September 19th, and the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, September 19th. I mean, a motion and a second. Legislator Patel, legislator Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Looking for the acceptance of the budgetary transfers. The budgetary transfers, August 17th, 2017, to September 17th, 2017, and the aggregate budgetary transfers for September 2017. Legislator Headwell, need a second. Legislator Pep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Looking for a motion and a second for the procurement record for August 2017. Motion, legislator Pep, legislator Isabel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Pass.
Looking for a motion and a second for the procurement record for August 2017. Motion, legislator Pep, legislator Isabel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Do we have anything under old business? Hearing none, do we have anything under new business? At this time, I would like to, I need a motion and a second to suspend the rules and to add Resolution 23 to the agenda. Motion, legislator Sweet. Second, legislator Pep. All in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. Legislator Jesse. Abstentions?
Motion passed.
Okay. So, if everybody wants to update their system, then everything will... So, just everybody else, thank you. The last resolution that we amended will be a executive session to discuss legal matters. So, that's all of what we're doing. Okay, first resolution of the evening, Resolution Number 209, Resolution Accepting Grant Application for the Montgomery County Bike Trail Restoration Project, New York State Dormitory Authority, the state in New York. Sponsors were legislators Headwell and Pep. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Resolution passed.
Resolution 209, Resolution Accepting the Grant Application for Montgomery County Bike Trail Restoration Project, New York State Dormitory. Did I just read that? That's, I'm sorry. 210. My screen is, okay, 210, I'm sorry. Resolution 210, Resolution Establishing Montgomery County Legislature as Lead Agency in a Secret Determination for the Snowmobile Trail. Sponsors were legislators Wilson and Pep. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Resolution 211, Resolution Establishing a Negative Declaration of the, in a Secret Determination for the Snowmobile Trail. Sponsors were legislators Ducey and Headwell. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Resolution 212, Resolution Authorizing the County Executive to Sign First Amendment to 2017 Agreement with the Soil and Water Conservation District. Sponsors were Pep and Kelly. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Resolution 213, Resolution Authorizing the County Executive to Sign Agreement with, we have an amendment coming up, for Engineering Services Emergency Management, Sheriff Garage and Starght Facility. Looking for, sponsored by legislators Pep and Sweet. Legislator Pep.
Mr. Chair, I would like to propose an amendment to this resolution with more specific information provided to all of us on our desks here this evening. That amendment would be, the engineering firm would be Delta Engineering, and the cost not to exceed $120,000.
Thank you, legislator Pep. So, I'm looking for a sponsor and a second for the amendment. Legislator Pep, second, legislator Sweet. All those in favor of the, or discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Legislator Jesse.
I don't support this amendment at this time, especially since the scoring for the request proposals is included in our package, so we have something good to go by here. I bring this up so that I'm not inconsistent when we get to the later resolution review of Montgomery 7. And as a point of order, I meant to ask if suspending the rules is different than actually voting on putting this on the agenda, if that should have been voted on separately.
I think, yeah, we will vote to go to executive session. The suspension of the rules was just to add to the resolution.
My point is, I think that's two different things. One is to suspend the rules, the other is to add to the resolution. All right. We'll get to it later.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Motion passed.
So, now we're going to vote on the Resolution 2013 As Amended. Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution 213 As Amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Resolution 214, Resolution Amending the 2017 Operating Budget, Montgomery County Department of Public Works Buildings and Grounds Equipment Annex Building Boiler and Roof. Sponsors were legislators Pep and Headwell. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Resolution passed.
Resolution 215, Resolution Changing the Grade of the Community Health Nurse Position to Comply with Article 6 of New York State Public Health Law. Sponsors were legislators Wilson and Isabel. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Resolution 216, Resolution Amending the 2017 Operating Budget, Alcohol and Substance Abuse. Sponsors were legislators Pep and Patel. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Resolution passed.
Resolution 217, Resolution Amending the 2017 Operating Budget, State Aid Funding for Mental Health. Sponsors were legislators Sweet and Wilson. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Resolution 218, Resolution Amending the 2017 Operating Budget to Realize Revenues From Equipment Sale. Sponsors were legislators Patel and Pep. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Resolution passed.
Resolution 219, Resolution Amending 2017 Operating Budget, the E911. Sponsors were legislators Wilson and Sweet. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Resolution 220, Resolution Amending the 2017 Operating Budget for the jail. Sponsors were legislators Pep and Wilson. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Resolution 221, Resolution Amending the 2017 Operating Budget, Equipment Maintenance for a Project Lifesaver. Sponsors were legislators Wilson and Sweet. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Resolution Approving Abstract of Audited Claims. Sponsors were legislators Kelly and Diamond. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. And final resolution, which I'll be looking for a sponsor in a second, Resolution Number 223, Resolution Approving Settlement of...
We're going to get, or, exactly, session first.
Before, yeah.
Has this actually, Mr. Chairman, has this actually been added to the agenda?
Yes. Under new business, we approve, amend the agenda.
Does it suspend the rules to add?
So, that must have been in one sweep.
One sweep. That's the way I heard it.
All right.
But, if you want to clarify the...
No.
The record, because I'm going to do that.
But I would like an opportunity to be heard before we go into executive session.
Looking for a sponsor in a second to go into executive session. Legislator Wilson, legislator Isabel. Discussion. Legislator Jesse.
Well, I'm opposed to going into executive session. I'm also opposed to entertaining this resolution this evening. This is another example of, this is pretty similar to a past circumstance where we're a resolution placed on our desk last minute involved nearly $100,000 from the contingency fund, or the fund balance, I should say. And so, just that alone leads me to oppose that at this time until we hear more, and I would have liked to have had some time prior to the meeting. In addition, the form, and this is a minor point, but I'm not sure the form is correct because it makes it look like we're increasing appropriate fund balance the way this is listed, but we are not. We're going to be drawing from appropriate fund balance to pay this like amount of $89,977.50. And so, I speak to both of those issues really without knowing the actual merits of the settlement. I have some idea from the past. I know that there were indications that this might be settled, and that's fine. Like I said, I don't, I don't know what the merits are or why I should or should not vote for this. I just, I'm opposed to bringing it up at this time, but we really haven't had the time to discuss it. And I don't, I just don't like the casualness with which we approach these $100,000 appropriated fund balance amounts.
Would you like to have it go through committee inside it for discussion purposes?
Can we go into executive session first?
Well, I would, I need a motion and a second for executive session and discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions.
We'll come back.
So, we have motion going, executive session. We just let the press know, and if you have any questions for us now, because we're not going to have any further business after that, so if you...
Well, it'll be this one, resolution, if you decide to vote on it.
If you want to stay around for that.
So, you already can come back in session?
We'll come back in. Looking for a motion to come on to executive session. Legislator Headwell, second, legislator Isabel. All in favor of coming out of executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Indeed, we'll let everyone in. The last resolution of the evening, Resolution 223, Resolution Approving Settlement of Cook versus Montgomery County et al., and Samuels versus Montgomery County et al. Looking for a motion and a second. Legislator Pep, legislator Headwell. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to divide the question. I'd like to vote on these two separately.
Motion to divide, do I have a second?
Quick voter, I think it requires some...
So, it'll be Resolution 223 A and B. So, the Resolution 223 A would be a Resolution Approving Settlement of Cook versus Montgomery, Montgomery County. Motion and a second.
So moved.
Let's see, Jesse, legislator Wilson. All those in favor of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Resolution 223B, Resolution Samuels versus Montgomery County. Looking for a sponsor in a second.
Sponsor.
Legislator Headwell, legislator Pep.
We'll have to insert, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we'll have to insert the appropriate amounts to...
Yeah, okay. Correct. So, first one, 75? So, I'll just correct the record. So I'll just correct the record to...
39,775.50.
For the first one.
First Samuels.
First Samuels, 39?
775.50.
775.50. So Deputy Clerk, if you could, on the original 223A, if we can insert the amount of $50,222.
223A is 50,000 even. Oh, sorry, this is why I don't do math. So A should be 50,000 even, B should be the balance.
Okay. So the first one will be 50,000 even.
39,000.
775.50.
Okay, so then Resolution B, Samuels versus Montgomery County, will insert the amount of $39,977.50. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Passed.
All right, that's the last resolution of the evening.
You did vote on A. You did 223B just now.
We did A, I just inserted the amount as an addition.
I didn't hear, we voted on...
Yeah.
I thought we voted to divide the question.
Yeah.
And then we voted on B.
Can we go back? We voted on A, the out and amount, and then when we got to B, Legislative Ducey said shouldn't we separate? But we took...
Clerk, simply going back to amend the record, we're putting the appropriate amounts that total the 89,977.50.
On that one, on the first one, hey, you made the motion and Wilson, the second, I believe.
That's correct. We did not take a vote on the divided question.
No. Did we need to do that? What, do we vote on it, on the divided question?
Yeah, that's what I thought we voted on, to divide the question.
Oh, I don't think that...
Motion to divide the question.
I think, I think, I don't think that you can vote on that.
You don't discuss that, but you vote to divide.
Okay.
And then you vote on each resolution.
But I think that, I think that legislature is always entitled to have the question divided. I don't think that can be voted against. We're going to have to go by what you say, but that's what I think. But we also made a motion and a second on the Resolution... 23, A and then B.
So we had the resolution sponsored a second, and there was a motion to divide, which we should have voted on, divide sponsored a second.
So was then the record to vote on the division? We've already divided it and voted on it, so...
So the record, so just to clarify, the record is clear that there's a sponsor and second for each resolution, and not there was a vote in the pod for each?
On A, there's Ducey and Wilson, and on B, there's Hedwell and Pep.
Okay. So a positive vote on each, and...
No vote on the divide.
Can we do a vote to divide the question, just to clarify the record?
So divided question, interrupt, this says no, second, yes, debate, no, amend, yes, and vote the majority.
So we need a vote.
So this is important enough if you want to go back to, you're saying that there is a vote on the... It says a majority, vote for the...
According to our rules.
For divided question.
As usual, I'm operating from a different set of rules.
Oh, that's fine.
We need to clarify the record that there is a vote to divide the question.
You made the motion, so you need to say it. I'll second. Okay. Legislative? All right, so we're going to have a vote, just to clarify the record on dividing the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Passed.
Thank you.
So before we adjourn, I'd like to thank our county attorney and our deputy clerk for helping us with the meeting this evening. And I'd like to thank Andy Santill, our communications specialist, for all his hard work every month and for this meeting also. Legislative Patel, or Hedwell.
I'd like to personally thank Mike Pep for all his work and his efforts that he put into it. Last night he ran, went after the meeting, I think we had a nice discussion, and I think it was mostly because of the direction that we were all in, so, you know, thank you, you did a great job.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, I really appreciate that. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Legislative Patel, Legislative Isabel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn, 8 o'clock.